... morning is, did I know how to say trustee DeVerikis' name enough? So, thank you for helping out. No, but, but thanks, I'm going, how do I do this? No, yeah, so.
I think you practiced.
Kind of slide, yeah. Yeah. Do we have anybody to speak in public?
No.
Okay. We're gonna go close session. Oh, that's yours, sorry.
Okay.
Okay. So, welcome to the regular session, the Victorelli Community College Board Trustees of Tuesday, July 9th. Katie, can we do roll call?
Yes. Trustee Brady?
Here.
Trustee Pecorit.
Here.
Trustee what?
Here.
Trustee Tarkin?
Here.
Trustee DeVerikis?
Here.
Student trustee Haley Reyes?
Here.
Superintendent president, Dr. Walton.
Here.
Morley, you want to lead us to the pledge of allegiance? Morley, you want to lead us to the pledge of allegiance? He totally did. We are proud to have the tallest guy in the room and the tallest pastor in the entire High Desert, Pastor Josh Gruber, to lead us in our prayer.
Blessed to be here tonight, Ava got fed, so thank you so much.
Did you get some?
Yes, she invited.
Yeah, there was so many extra, I was like, nobody wants to play.
Wow, that's good. You know what? You'll be here again.
She said we're doing it everybody's time now, so.
Yeah, exactly.
Those are your words, not mine.
Well, I was thinking, I pray that God, we thank you so much for our college. Thank you so much for our community. Lord, we pray your divine favor to be upon this great institution. I pray you touch every faculty member, administration, every worker in this place. I pray for our students, Lord, that they would grow in their knowledge and education, Lord, and their values, just pray your blessings on them. Lord, I pray that you prosper our school, Lord, financially, Lord, and our community, Lord, and our state. And Lord bless this meeting tonight, bless the trustees that are here, decisions that are made, that it be for your glory, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Complete written requests to address the board shall be submitted at the beginning of the open session portion of the meeting. Individuals may comment after being recognized by the board president before board discussion of a particular item under Board Policy 2350. Do we have any public comments? Nope. Announcement of closed session. Are you gonna announce?
I'm gonna announce.
Dr. Walton's gonna announce closed session.
The board convened in closed session at 5:34 PM. All five board members were present. Item 2.1, Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release, public employee number 13057924. On a motion by trustee Tarpley, seconded by trustee Wood, the board voted four to zero with trustee Pinkerton abstaining to dismiss public employee number 13057924. Item 2.2, Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release, public employee number 040117924. On a motion by trustee Wood, seconded by trustee Tarpley, the board voted five to zero to accept the resignation of public employee number 04017924 and enter a release agreement to separation for the total sum of $1,802.88. Item 2.3, Conference with Legal Counsel, Potential Anticipating Litigation Pursued to Government Code, Section 54956.9. On a motion by trustee Tarpley, seconded by trustee Pinkerton, the board voted four to zero with trustee Wood abstaining to reject the claim of Lori Lee Lawrence. Closed session adjourned at 5:46 PM.
Thank you, Dr. Walton. I did make one mistake already, student trustees, so we're gonna have the swearing-in scene of our student trustee Haley Reyes. So, Dr. Walton's gonna administrate this. You never thought this would get here, right?
Would you rather repeat after me? Hi Haley Reyes.
Hi Haley Reyes.
Have been appointed by my peers on March, May, May 29th, 2024.
Have been appointed by my peers on May 29th, 2024.
To serve as the Associated Student Body President.
To serve as the Associate Student Body President.
As student trustee.
As student trustee.
To the Board of Victor Valley Community College District.
To the Board of Victor Valley Community College District.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The state of California.
The state of California.
And the Victor Valley College Associated Student Body.
And the Victor Valley College Associated Student Body.
In addition.
In addition.
I will abide by the Victor Valley Community College District Board Policies.
In addition, I will abide by the Victor Valley College Community District Board Policies.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of office.
Of student trustee for Victor Valley Community College District.
Of student trustee for Victor Valley College Community College District.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Do you want to give a little welcome?
Hello, everyone. I'm excited to be here. I know I have a lot of shoes to fill, but I'm excited for this upcoming year, and I'm really for the students, and that's all that matters to me. Thank you.
Great, thanks. At this time, the board trustees will listen to communication from the public on non-adjourned items pertaining to college business. Each speaker is limited to one presentation per meeting on non-adjourned matters. Public comments are limited to three minutes per individual and total of 15 minutes per topic. Speakers will be timed electronically, and all speakers will be called on to approach the microphone at the appropriate time to speak. Only those who have been recognized by the board president will be permitted to speak under state law, period. State law prohibits the board from addressing any issues not included on the agenda according to Board Policy 2350. Do we have any? We do not.
3.6.
Boo. Yep, sorry. Do we have any items that have been deleted?
Yes. Deleted or corrected.
Thanks for bringing it to my attention.
Yes, happy to do so. We're pulling 10.15, Learning-Aligned Employment Program Agreement versus Assembly of Data Victorville to be removed. 10.16, Learning Ascent Aligned Employment Program Agreement, LAEP Grace Christian Preschool to be removed. 10.17, Learning-Aligned Employment Program Agreement, LAEPCEP, America, California, Doing Business As Virtu- Virtu- I don't know how you say that. Virtuity or something like that, to be removed. Those, by the way, are being removed because the state removed the money. So, apologies to our pastor who's here tonight, but they took back their money, they're Indian givers. Anyway, I shouldn't have said that, but okay, we'll live over it. 12.2, Second Read. Oh, Second Read of Approval of Board Policy 2015 Student Members Term of Office states that it shall be one year, commencing on June 1st. That should reflect July 1st, not June 1st. 15.4, Correction, Contract of Employment Correction, Removing, Recapturing Enrollment So That It States Executive Director of Instruction.
That's it? Thank you. We don't have any comments on non-adjourned items? Great. We are very, we are pleased and honored tonight to have our highest-ranking state official, Assemblyman Tom Lackey here, who drove from the Antelope Valley, who does a lot of driving to serve one of the largest districts in the pride. Assemblyman, isn't it the largest district in California?
No.
No?
There's some up north that are bigger, but it's sort of California region.
Great, well, welcome and come on up and, you know, take 10 minutes and talk about what you're doing and what impact it has to the college and all the great things that I know that you're accomplishing out up there.
Okay. Kind of a interesting setup, because I don't know whether I'm talking to you or if I'm talking to them. So, I could turn this thing, I would, but I'm not going to, so I'm just gonna do this.
Okay.
How's this?
Perfect.
This is the last meeting in this boardroom, so the next one, you'll be able to do all kinds of stuff.
I am? Oh, now I am.
Right.
Okay. Well, thank you for allowing me to have a few minutes just to kind of talk about the world that I get to enjoy. You've entrusted me to represent this region. It is a great privilege to be in this capacity. For those of you who don't know my background, I was with the California Highway Patrol for almost 30 years. That was really my defining experience in life. Prior to that, I was a special ed teacher, excuse me, at the elementary level, and I've been, as an elected official, I was on a governing board for six years at an elementary, Palmdale Elementary School District, and wow, what a learning experience that was. It's a very difficult times, just like we're kind of entering into now, budget-wise. And then I was on a city council for nine years, and then I've now been in the legislature, this is my 10th year. And it's been quite an experience. One of the things I will tell you, first of all, is our budget situation is in crisis. And you don't hear a lot of the clamor, because in my opinion, they're not being truthful. There's a lot of manipulation of the budget because it's so giant, so huge. And the state is not to blame for all the difficulties. This is really a normal situation when you've had years and years and years of success that it corrects. The economic conditions seem to go up and down, up and down, up and down throughout history, and we've been up. In fact, this is my first deficit year in 10 years. And so, it's difficult to understand the long-term outcome of how we're managing this budget crisis, but I just wish that we were more truthful with people and more honest about the difficulties, because you can only put off debt for so long. You can only increase debt for so long, and eventually someone ends up paying a price for that debt. And anyways, there's been some creative moves when it came to voting for the budget in chief, which is the overall budget, and then we have all these little modifications, for lack of a better term, and they're called trailer bills. And some of these trailer bills will affect this institution directly, at least one of them especially. There's a bill, Assembly Bill 155, and it's titled the Higher Education Trailer Bill, and it provides alternative financial opportunities for student housing, establishing nursing programs at community college campuses, and extends FASPA filing dates. You guys all know that FASPA is probably what a lot of people need, those dollars. Even at the junior college level, they wouldn't be able to engage in education, and so that's something that I believe needed to be supported and was supported. The suspension of Prop 98, there are benefits to that, and there are also drawbacks to that, so I didn't weigh in. I didn't vote for it or against it because there are some benefits and there's some non-benefits, and I don't have the time to go into detail, but you can contact me at my office, because we're about ready to go out of session in September, so I'll be available a lot more than I will through September. One of my biggest frustrations, though, everybody, is the way we're managing public safety. I've been on the public safety committee my entire legislative time, and it's frustrating to me that there's tricks being played on the public right now. And quite frankly, it's not a partisan thing. It's more the governor thing, and this governor does not believe that Prop 47 has anything to do with this outbreak of theft. It's crazy, how can you deny that? How can you deny that prior to Prop 47, we didn't lock up anything in our grocery stores? Now, just simple items. You go in to most grocery stores, and they have to lock up items because of the rampant thievery that's going on. The consequences, and Prop 47 was characterized as something that people thought it was going to result in safer schools. That was the ballot title, but I think that they were misled, unfortunately. And I'm not saying everything about Prop 47 was disastrous, but most of it, what it did is it relieved consequences for deviancy or at least non-compliance with current law. And I do think that we were, we needed to adapt how we dealt with people who are addicted to drugs. I totally believe that that was a good thing. But what is not good is that we reduced the amount of consequences for theft in a way that petty theft now went all the way up to $950 a day, per, not even a day, per incident. So, you could rob one store for $950, go to another place, $950, and don't think that that's not being done, and your consequences of petty theft. And we did away with the accumulation of priors on petty theft. So, that needs to be fixed, everybody. We've learned that that is a terrible public policy. Let's just fix it. And so, you're going to have a chance, because a lot of people rallied together, got signatures, and spent a lot of money to put this on the ballot, the fix to Prop 47. You're gonna have a chance to vote on that. I say that it passes overwhelmingly, but guess what? You have a governor who does not want to touch Prop 47 or these statutes because he thinks it was a good thing. And I'm not here to defend the governor's position, I'm sure there's someone who can attempt to, but I have not heard a good explanation yet, they dance around it, but just prior to coming out here, all of a sudden, he had this proposal to now his amendment to Prop 47, and it's going, all it will do is confuse the voters, and it will negate the real changes that need to happen to this theft statute, and also to the drug statute, because something that's happened since Prop 47 is a new drug has emerged, and it's the biggest killer in this country, drug, and it's fentanyl. And so, there's no consequence for these people who are peddling fentanyl. That's also in this initiative, and you'll have a chance to address that. And I'm telling you, folks, you have gamesmanship that's going on. They even tried to pass this poison pill addressing theft. The legislature had an effort that danced around Prop 47, but it did some good things, and we had a dozen bills that addressed both fentanyl and theft. We had 12 bills, but they really, they nibbled, and I'm not going to go into detail, but you just have to trust me on that. And what was going to happen is, because the governor addressed the fact that theft was out of control, but he always, he characterized organized retail theft, which is a problem, but so is just regular person theft, right? Not all these circumstances have to do with organized retail theft, and that's all he wanted to work on, which is a problem, so we agreed and we supported, when I say we, both the Republicans and Democrats worked together to get a bill package together. Well, here's what the proposal was, hey, if we're going to pass this bill that will be a poison pill that will negate all 12 of those bills if the initiative passes. Who does that? Who does that? That's responsible. And you know, guess what? So, we exposed it when those who have a different leaning exposed the fact that they were trying to do this, and we stopped it. They pulled it. And guess what else? When he tried to do this last manipulation to bring forward another initiative to confuse the voters with this other initiative, he pulled it. For now, keep your eyes open. It's not over, we got another month to go. But these are things, I don't care what side of the political perspective you share, we all share this problem. We all share, we know the fix. So, why do we try to confuse people for political gamesmanship? It's wrong. It's wrong, and just know that I will speak out against it. I spoke very, very directly against both of these measures, and I will continue to do so, because it's not principled disagreement in policy. It's cause to confuse people. That's wrong. That's wrong. I don't care what side of the political perspective you share, dishonesty is never to be supported in this society that we have, because people trust leadership. They should be able to trust leadership. So, anyways, that's my message. Take a look at the initiative. I certainly support it. I certainly think that everybody should jump on that perspective, and I'm very proud to be able to represent you, and I'm just a kid from, a product of Boron, California, man. I love the desert. I've decided to raise my family in the desert. But you know what? Public policy does not love the desert. They're doing things to us that are wrong. And we need to stand up and we need to speak out. This whole Joshua Tree thing drives me crazy. Shouldn't have happened. But we'll work to try to soften its impact. And I'll work together with you. And I'm very, very thankful to represent you. And if there's no other questions, I don't know how long, probably spoke longer than you wanted me to speak anyways. It's up to you guys, whatever you want.
Well, first thing, thanks, I think, for your candor. I do want to go on the record and say that we invited a Democratic Assemblyman, Juan Correa, to the same meeting tonight, and he had a conflict, but we have reached out to him again to be sure that between now and December, when I am no longer board president, hopefully the next president will continue what we're doing here, has a chance to address the board. So do any of the trustees have any questions of Assemblyman Tom Lucky?
I do. Do you know the, you know how the ballot initiative is going to be worded? I agree with you, and I'll tell you where my question stems from.
Summary and title is what you're talking about.
I hate when they put it on where yes means no and no means yes, right? They go, you know, they put it on and, and I'm an attorney. You probably don't know that. They know that.
I do now.
And I read some of them and I'm like, I'm not sure. I'm not sure if yes means yes, or yes means no, or no means yes, or...
This is very clear-cut as it currently stands. And the summary and title is chosen by the Attorney General. He gets to pick the description. And people put a lot of their energy in that summary and title, a lot of trust. And that's why the second initiative will cause confusion with people. And they can also change the summary and title of the original ballot proposal. So there's a lot of gamesmanship that still can happen. I just ask people to pay attention. Just pay attention.
You don't know at this point what it's going to be?
It's not in print yet. We won't know, we won't know until probably end of August. We'll know. But I'll try to keep you informed the best I can. And just know that my intentions aren't Republican or Democrat. They're for public safety. I mean, all of us are impacted by this thievery that's going on. We're all hurt by it. And we all know what needs to happen. And so let's just do it. And we'll see an improvement. And it won't happen overnight, but these smash and grab, they're doing it without any kind of significant consequences. And especially these multiple petty thefts, what they call petty. Petty theft to me was like under 50 bucks, not 950. And I think that that's what a reasonable person would think. So there's no other questions? Thank you for giving, yes?
I do, but about three weeks ago, the State Supreme Court overruled a bill that was going to be on the ballot. I think 1.4 million...
It was a tax bill.
Yeah, 1.4 million people signed that to get it on. And the Supreme Court took it off. You want to tell people in here what that was all about, especially when 1.4 million people signed it?
Well, I have a very unobjective perspective about that. I mean, it was something, I'll give you the explanation from a high level and not getting into much of the detail. Because basically what its intention was that anytime the legislature was proposing to raise taxes, that they would have to go to the people in order to impose those tax increases. And they would have to get two-thirds of the people to agree to those increased taxes. And the California Supreme Court felt that that was unconstitutional. And that's essentially, that's the short general explanation of what happened. I share a different view. I think what's happened and the desire for, because I would tell you, the people who share a different fiscal perspective than I do feel more comfortable imposing tax increases on people when they feel it's justified. And I don't see how it's unconstitutional to get buy-in from those who they're imposing those charges to. I don't understand where it's unconstitutional, but again, I'm not a lawyer. And it seems like the people should be able to weigh in on that, but the court saw differently.
Any questions? Any questions from the audience?
With a lot of money, it can.
They're currently relooking at, it's too late for this to...
There's a lot of money been spent already.
A lot.
Unimaginable amounts of money, but we'll see. We'll see. I have no crystal ball to know whether or not that will be appealed or not. There is some possibility that it will, but I wouldn't guarantee it because it's, there's a lot of demoralized people, I'll just say that. But there are some people that are very happy, too. So it's probably a mix, probably just as many happy people as there are people that are not. A lot of people are...
Tennessee, Nevada, Washington, Florida, yeah, a place where there's some taxes. So we have two more questions. Morally, you usurped our president because I saw you first. So it's the only time you ever get that shot.
As Trustee Woods was saying, the ballot is confusing, a lot of confusion, yes or no. Where do you go to get the correct verbiage to understand what that initiative is?
Well, they're all sources of people, all sorts of sources for...
Where's the truth, folks?
I have my own thoughts on that, but they're my thoughts, right? And so I, we're all the result of our life experiences, right? And here's one of the things that I find to be very troubling is that our society is getting to be so polarized that we have people that don't like other people, want to even talk to other people because they have a different party affiliation. That's very scary. That's very, very un-American to me. Because I would just tell you that they're opinions, right? And those opinions are based on whatever life experience. I have had a very, very gifted life experience. I had really good influencers in my life. I had people who taught me, and I didn't really necessarily realize that I had such good influencers when I was growing up because I had friends that had a lot more freedom, had a lot more ability to do other things and make other choices. I had a pretty rigid set of influencers that encouraged me to go a different direction. And so I had the benefit of that. And there's a lot of people that do not have those kinds of influences. And they don't even have loving homes. They don't even have the very basics. A lot of times, they go hungry even. I never had that, never. And so what we need to do as a society is we need to realize that. And those people that have gone up through a more difficult pathway sometimes, they could teach us things too that have had the more rigid upbringing and the good influencers. And we need to work with each other. That's how this country becomes so strong. That's when diversity actually strengthens. But when you start to cannibalize each other because of appearance, because of background, because of all these other things that could strengthen us if we draw from each other, when they divide us, they hurt us. And we're in a hurt trend, very hurtful trend. All you have to do is look at presidential period, what are we doing, right? I mean, we have such polarized positions right now, and emotions are very, very impactful. I would tell you, my life experiences are that emotions are way stronger than reason. And so... An objective, you're asking for an objective analysis, and there are a lot of people that claim they have that. But I'm not comfortable telling you who's more objective than the other because it's so polarized right now. I don't know where you go. Because here's what happens. When you're sent your sample ballot, you have arguments for and arguments against. And then read both of them, right? And see which one seems to be the most reasonable to you. You have other people that, hopefully, I try to build trust with people for me personally. And I get a lot of people that ask me because I'm in the game. And I will share with people, anybody, what my suggestions are. But they're my suggestions, right? And based on my life experiences, based on my engagements, I don't find it to be as difficult as some people do. But especially these initiatives, they're not that, well, some are pretty self-explanatory, some you'll see, you'll see, just like we normally do. It's a great, I'm so thankful to be an American person, right? And even though we've got some goofy circumstances, I'm old enough to remember the 60s and 70s, man, we were in trouble then, too. And so we'll figure it out. We've got too many good people on both sides. But we need to not let the toxic people be at the top. That's all I have to say about that.
Assemblyman Tom, Dr. Wallen has a question.
Okay.
Assemblyman, thank you for being here tonight. Good to see you again.
Likewise.
I don't know if you're aware, but Victor Valley College is the fastest-growing community college in the state. In fact, according to...
You've told me that before, but yes.
We'll tell you every time.
We talked about it about an hour earlier.
In the last two years, we've grown over 50%. And in fact, our national resources are telling us that, our sources, that we are probably the fastest-growing community college in the nation for the last two years. Right now, you know that we are funded, our primary funding base is the FTES, full-time equivalent students. And we have 1,450 full-time equivalent students, which is around $10 million worth of income revenue to the district that right now is being unfunded. There are 18 colleges in the state that have some growth...
Not state funding?
Right. There are 18 districts in the, out of the 73 college districts, 18 have some growth. Three have really good growth, current community college district, our district, and Mount San Jacinto College. So those three colleges have almost all of the unfunded FTES. 55 districts are being funded above their FTES. In other words, given more money than what they're generating. Some of them as much as 72%. And I know that's a problem that's probably too big to solve, at least right now. But I would say this, looking at the numbers, to fund the colleges that are growing, I think that's the first place to start figuring out what to do with the problem. Because giving money to colleges that are not growing and they're actually losing and yet you're still funding them at those levels when they've lost so many of their students. And while we have ours, they're taking money away. And I can't carry in our budget. So I'm in a dilemma. Either we get funded or I have to quit offering classes and denying students in the high desert the opportunity for a higher education. And I would just appreciate it if you would look into this for us and if, because we're not talking about, if you take those 18 districts, total up what they're unfunded, it's pennies on the dollar of what this budget, even a community college, looks like. So I'd be happy to talk with you outside of this meeting, but I'd appreciate it if you would look into it for us because I'm speaking on behalf of our students who need this higher education that we're offering up here. And we're doing the best that we can.
Happy to do that. Please do me a favor and contact my legislative office so that we can go into this more directly and we can hit the right influencers and make our plea.
And before you go, Assemblyman Tom, I want to introduce Anna Zarley, who is your district director in the back. Thank you. We will definitely be in contact.
No, you're really to be commended, especially for your career technical education choices that you have here. Is it true you still have that commercial driving thing moving forward?
Oh, yeah.
It's not moving forward, it's...
It's trucking along.
That's good.
You're welcome, you're welcome. I'm here all night.
That's actually a mom joke instead of a dad joke.
Yes, it is.
So the class sold out in two minutes, we have 1,200 people on the way.
That's not surprising to me.
McKenty keeps buying trucks and they keep...
She wraps them.
Down the road.
She's in charge.
Wrap them.
Her and that guy.
Have you heard of any other junior college offering such a thing? I have not.
I have not heard of one.
Not a full program. They have partial programs.
And yours is a full program, yeah?
Our trucks have Victor Valley Community College all over. You canvass them as you go down the road.
Wow. Just know that I don't only appreciate that, but you're going to have some people that are going to have careers because of that opportunity. And that is, that's the American thing, right? That's what we should all be celebrating, what we should all be advocating for because some of those people would be probably heading in a very discouraging life had this opportunity not been placed before them. And so that's what people in leadership should be striving for. And so I'm very thankful that you guys have had the foresight and the energy and all the planning that goes along with that because it requires every person that's involved in order to accomplish such a thing. So thank you for what you do here. I'm proud to be part of this desert region and hope I get another two years.
We're proud to have you, Zor, Assemblyman.
All right. Thank you.
Tom, do you want to see the trucks?
Let him drive them, let him drive them. Just saying.
They can show you where the trucks are. They're just like a one-minute drive.
They're right down the bottom of the hill.
Here, Ratcliffe's going to take you down and show you. His babies, his babies down there.
Item 6.1, Board of Trustees Goals.
So the year ran out and because of the passing of former trustee Henderson and the work and energy we had to put into replacing him and the fact that we had some major resignations, we did not do our normal board retreat in June to look, examine, do the self-evaluation and to create new goals. So right now, I am working with PPL and we're going to check with some dates with you folks as soon as I hear back from them when they're available. We're looking at the last two weeks of August, trying to work something in. If that doesn't work, because one of you can't make it, or if we can't get something with them, we'll move into September. But we want, we've got a new trustee and we want her to be part of the process of us establishing goals for this next year. So we're going to pass by this until you can do an analysis and we'll be in touch with you on this issue.
Thanks. At this time, the board trustees will report on matters directly related to their functions as board members, attend conferences, professional affiliations, and community involvement. And I'm going to start tonight with our new student president.
Hello, everyone. So I attended graduation in June and we gave students gifts, which were these red and burgundy duffel bags, which you trustees would have seen as you sat in your chairs. And on behalf of the associated student body, we just want to say thank you and that we appreciate you for all that you do for our students. And graduation was a success this year with our biggest graduate, like...
Thank you.
And that will be all.
Thank you for including us.
Chelsea Laura.
So I'm new. So last month, three days in a row, I came and made a statement, was voted in, sworn in the next day, the next day I went to graduation. It's an honor to be here. I've been studying my trustee handbook a lot, making lots of notes and learning lots of things. And I'm really looking forward to what the future has to store.
Meeting number two.
Signed up for some things coming up. Signed up for some things coming up, but haven't done them yet, so.
You've been a great addition so far, so thanks.
Thank you.
Trustee Wood.
Not much to report out historically, but looking forward to the ASP retreat this upcoming weekend. Should be a lot of work, a lot of good work. Hopefully, you know, a little bit of, a little bit of argument, a little bit of negotiation, a little bit of fun, a little bit of grief. And at the end, as usual, an amazing product, coming back down the hill from Big Bear on Sunday afternoon. So I really look forward to it, love it, and we're gonna have a good time.
Trustee Tarpley.
So I haven't really attended too many events. Graduation was amazing as always. And yes, I do make it take a little bit longer because I hug all the graduates, but I'm just so excited for them and I'm so proud of them. And very much looking forward to spending the entire retreat with the students. So I'll be going up with them in the morning and on Thursday and staying until Sunday. And I can't wait to see what this year brings us. Look forward to actually reversing it because usually we do our board goals and then we kind of offer some insight, we'll put that in quotations, regarding our goals and aligning everybody. But I think it's great to start with the students because that's what matters most. So I'm looking forward to Thursday. Thank you.
Thanks. That's why we're here. Trustee and Vice President Pinkerton.
John and I went to the very first cosmetology and manicuring graduation ceremony. John and I have been to hundreds of graduations, but there was none like this one. There was a sea of pink robes and pink hats.
How cute.
With beautiful hairstyles and beautiful nails. And I'm sure Richard taught them everything they needed to know.
Lovely for all of us.
At the graduation, it was standing room only. I want to thank Richard for inviting us up on the stage, otherwise we wouldn't have a place to sit. And I wanted to give a big thank you to Dr. McKenzie Terango, Marie Hodges, Dr. Richard Ratcliffe, and Dr. Henry Young for making that happen.
That's it?
No, I have one more.
Oh, no, there's more.
That's our shortest report ever.
President Walden, President Brady, trustee Woods, Tarpley, and trustee DeBarcas, and our family at our all-time favorite college and to all throughout the high desert and Mojave River Valley. Every day, every day we become more responsive to our needs of our students and the larger community. Because all of the hard work that our staff and our students are doing, we are the fastest growing college in all of America. We literally have something for everyone here. As Robert says, VVC is the place to be. VVC is not only the place for the students, but also staff as well. All of our staff, including our CEO, Superintendent Walden, received substantial raises this year. And because of our new enrollment status, even the board got an increase. Expanding programs and services to meet the demands of our rapidly growing community has been good for our bottom line as well as for, as well as those who do our heavy lifting.
John and I would like to thank all of those who supported us with your votes, your love, and your encouragement over the last 12 years. This has been a great ride and with both a little sadness and much pride, I would be stepping aside and letting someone else take my seat at this table. For those who reside in the area of Hesperian Snowline School District, this is a wonderful opportunity to serve your community. Filing to run for the office begins on the 15th of this month. The last official day as vice president of this Victor, Victor Valley Community College District Board of Trustees will be July 31st, 2024. I want to wish my successor all the luck and good fortune and the blessings of God himself to continue the work that we all have begun here at the all-time favorite college. I love each one of you. Thank you for, thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve my community.
They call the air, just got sucked out of the room. Sharon, I don't know what to say. And I, I, I know you and John have, you know, wrestled with this for a long time and I, I consider you family. I introduced John to my entire family on the day I buried my mother, as my sixth brother. You two have done more as trustees, former trustees, I think than any one of us by 100 in the amount of things that you have attended in, in our behalf. I'm obviously sad to see you go, but at the same time, you know, as you shared with me and Deb, there comes a point in life where you need to spend some time. You have great kids and great grandkids and I know you love traveling around and, and I will tell you, I'm gonna miss you personally as, as a friend here on the board. I hope that, you know, somebody comes forward that, that really cares about our college. You know, we've worked really hard to get where we've got. We have a 16.7% budget reserve. I want people to understand that. So we're looking for people that, you know, care deeply about being sure those colleges are around. And I just want to say to you and in behalf of everybody how much we love you and I'm gonna miss you.
Thank you.
And John, you know, where are you? You know, you guys are invited to every meeting that you want and I would, I'm glad at least that you both are gonna be able to go through the next month and go through the next couple meetings at our, our new thing. John was incredibly, incredibly, incredibly supportive when we sat down with, with Dr. Wagner to say we need to not only get out of here, but we needed a building that did exactly what the Educational Conference Center did. So rather than next month, we're gonna break it in. So, thanks. With that, I, I've gotta say that last month was rather exciting. So not only did we go through the process of, you know, bringing on a new team member and, and trustee Laura, I really mean that I think that you're just a great fit and you brought a great amount of energy. But then to have that hearing, the Tuesday night hearing, the Wednesday deal, I mean, I go to bed at eight o'clock. I mean, I can get, get to bed till 11 o'clock that night. I woke up Thursday morning, I gotta say, I think I'm pretty tough. I was tired. You know, that, that was a great graduation. You know, Art and, I mean, the whole team out here, you know, I mean, I made a comment to Art after the last board meeting before that graduation, in 30 seconds, my phone rang to tell me that my gown was, that they hadn't forgotten my gown. Art was concerned I might have put on some weight and it wouldn't fit him, but, you know, it's only good. You know what? You just got such a great team here of people. Dr. Walden, you should be so pleased. So graduation was great. Saturday, as I told you, it is my absolute attempt to be there. I have a very serious problem on a transaction that is requiring a signature that I'm chasing somebody throughout the Illinois Empire to get. And unless I get that, it's gonna cost somebody millions of dollars. So the people that are involved know that I have committed to being on that mountain at a certain time and they're kind of playing with it. So if I can't get there, I, if I can, I will be there. I plan on being there, Deb plans on being with me, we're gonna be down by four. But, so if I don't show, it's not that I don't care, I've got kind of a gun to my head. So with that, President Superintendent's report.
Okay, well, you kind of shocked me.
Yeah.
I didn't get a heads up.
You do keep things close to the vest, I gotta say.
But anyway, I'll, I'll talk to you privately. I love you.
It's a decision negotiable.
So, moving on. So back in 2017, 18, the college did an economic impact study under Roger, our predecessor, in regard to what Victor Valley's impact is on the local, on the economy. And so tonight, we're gonna do a presentation, and this is a phase one presentation. This is the economic impact of our college on San Bernardino County. I want to make that clear. Counties landwise is the largest in the state. Maybe it's the largest in the nation, I don't know, but it's the largest.
It's the largest county in the lower 48.
Okay, so there you go. And, but phase two is going to show this, these numbers very differently because it will be focused only on the high desert. So what is the economic impact of Victor Valley College on the high desert? So that's the next part of this and that'll be coming in a few months. But we want to show you what happened in the first phase. And so Tim, can you log on? And Jenny, you want to come on and come up here and introduce Isaac or what is his name? Is that his name?
Yeah. So the same company that did our impact study and our program-
Well, that knocked over.
Gap analysis back in 2018, 2019, before your time, trustee Deverkus. But it's the same company, different name, they're called Lightcast. They're kind of the ones that most of the colleges go through. This gentleman, his name is Isaac Wenger. Hi, Isaac. Hails from Kansas State University, a Wildcat, right? His bachelor's degree is actually in operations management. He's been an economist for Lightcast for three years and has already done 60 community college economic impact studies, EISs. So let's hand it over. Are you ready, Isaac?
Yes, I am. Thank you for that introduction. So I'm gonna just walk through your, some of the results of your economic impact study. I'll pause a few times throughout this to answer any questions that you all have. So for now, I'm gonna share my screen. Are you all able to see that?
Yes.
Can we turn it up? Tim? A bit. Yeah, we can see it, Isaac.
Perfect. So just to give a quick introduction as to what this study is, our goal here is to measure the impact that Victor Valley College has on, on your region. So we're gonna look at what jobs and income are created based on the activities of your college. Just a minute of background on, on Lightcast. So we've been working with community colleges for over 20 years. This economic impact study was actually our flagship product. So this is a little piece of, of Lightcast history. So your analysis is broken out into two parts. The first is this economic impact analysis. So here we're gonna look at what new jobs and income are created in your region during our analysis here. So essentially, we're looking through the lens of what's the economic change in your region if your college doesn't exist? So if we could just magically remove your college from the region, what would be different? And then the second part of our analysis is the investment analysis. So in that section, we'll look at those long-term benefits that various stakeholders will realize as a result of your college's activities. And those stakeholders we'll look at will be students, taxpayers, and then society as a whole. So as was said before, through this study, we're looking at the impact on San Bernardino County. We will be looking at that high desert region in the future, so that's in the works. But for now, for this study, when I talk about what jobs are created, what income is added to the region, I'm referring to San, all of San Bernardino County. So to get this project started, we collected a lot of data from you all. We collected things on, on all of your students, where they're coming from, what education they had when they came to you, what they achieved with you all, as well as lots of finance information. So big thanks to, to your team for providing all of that. And we work together to make this as accurate as possible and is a very defensible study. So to jump into your, your impacts, we'll break this up into a couple of different impacts. The first one here is your operations spending impact. So this is generated directly from your college. As your college is a large employer, so your, your employers are then spending money on mortgages, eating out, you know, spending money on everything that, that people do. And also, your college spends money on its day-to-day operations. So what does all that money do within your, within your economy? That money hole has a ripple effect through your economy. Some of it leaves the region, some of it grows within the region. So your, your payroll is about $105 million and then there's another $39 million in those day-to-day expenses. So that contributed about $133 million in added regional income and that's supporting over 1,000 jobs in your region. So how we calculate that is by measuring what industries money is spent in and then looking through how it trickles through your economy and then subtracting away that money that leaves your regional economy. The next impact we can look at is your construction spending impact. So this is a bit simpler than, than previously. Here, we're just looking at how much money is spent on construction and this is gonna stay within just a few, a pretty narrow range of industries. So it's about $6 million in added regional income from your college's construction and that's supporting a further 62 jobs. So next, we can look at your student spending impact. So since we're only focusing on money that would not have been in your original economy without your college, here we're only gonna focus on two types of students. The first type are student relocators. So these are students who previously lived outside your region, but they moved to attend. In other words, if not for your college, they would not have come to this region. The second type of students we're looking at are retained students. So these are local students who would have left the region if not for your college. They may have gone into the workforce or gone to, you know, a different college outside your region. So both of these types of students are spending money in your regional economy while attending and if your college wasn't there, that money would not be there. So your students contributed over $15 million in added regional income and is supporting a further 234 jobs. Now, the final impact we'll look at is your alumni impact. And I do want to point out that this is a bit different than your previous impacts that we looked at. Previously, everything we've looked at is what we call a spending impact. So how much money was spent, how much stayed in the region? This alumni impact is more of a higher earnings and higher productivity impact. So what we're doing is we're capturing the human capital that you've provided to the economy over the years. So you've spent time equipping students with new skills that help them get those higher-paying jobs and just making your area's businesses more productive. So we look at all those students, all those previous cohorts that you, you trained, and then we're measuring their impact just on this analysis here. I always like to point out, this is the most unique impact to, to higher education. You know, businesses don't have an alumni impact. So, and this is also a very large impact. Almost $400 million is contributed to your region from your alumni and that's supporting a further 4,700 jobs. So finally, here we can look at the total impact. This is just a summation of those previous impacts. As you can see, there's over, over 6,000 jobs supported in your region. And in this figure here, we're showing what specific industries those, those jobs are support, your college's activities are supporting. So this is really, really important to show that your college is really supporting a wide variety of different industries. The majority of your jobs are, you know, outside the top five. We show the top five here, but there's a lot of other industries that are being impacted here. So before I move on to the, the investment analysis side, do you all have any questions over the results or the methodology used on anything I've covered so far?
I'll wait, I'll, I'll wait to the end. I was not aware when I read this the first time, and I, I'd started to read the second time, that this was a two-part analysis. So we got part one and part two comes out when, in a couple of months?
Yeah, we haven't really got in too deep into that discussion, but yeah, it's likely will be in a few months.
Okay. Yeah, some of the mythology that you used did not, I read these kind of analysis pretty often for the development industry, you know, gap, gap analysis, which Jenny would, you know, be, be aware of. And some of it did not make sense, but now I know there's a part two that does. On, on the, on the alumni portion, if, if your number's correct and we are able to capture 1% of that, that'd be 4 million bucks a year, wouldn't it? Back to our foundation? If, if that numbers-
So that, that's not really what we're showing. So in the, you're talking about this, this-
The alumni impact.
Approximately $400 million.
Yeah.
So what this is, this number means is, so we're looking at all of your alumni that you've trained, all previous cohorts over the years, and we're looking at, you know, how many have left the re, basically, we're looking at how many are still in the region and still working. And then we're adding up their, their contribution and added- Uh, and then we're adding up their, their contribution and added, uh, regional income just during this analysis year. So this is the income that they added to your region during, uh, analysis year of 2021 and 2022.
But how, 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 how can we establish a goal to, to, to get a part of that to our foundation, which we've now? Can, can you give us some idea with all the colleges that you've done? And then lastly, I guess my question, and, and I, I think this goes to Jenny, and I understand we do lag. Why are we using data that's almost three years old? Is that as current as we get? Isaac, can you answer that?
Yes, yeah, I, I certainly can. So, uh, typically, what we're doing here is, uh, with, you know, using fiscal year 2021, 2022, uh, it's pretty difficult to collect all of the college's data and all, you know, the regional data, uh, for, you know, just even a previous year. Uh, right now, we're, we're over halfway through 2024, and we're just starting to work on colleges and their 2023 data. Uh, most of that's because a lot of that finance information is not reported until, you know, at least April. Uh, and so that's kind of why we, we tend to lag behind, uh, a, a season, um, for this study.
I think Jenny wants to say something.
I just want you to think of it in terms of, we need time to earn and churn, right? They graduate in '22, they got to get into the workplace, that data has to be collected by the feds. So this is pre- this is standard practice. Back in '18, that was '16, '17 data for that last analysis.
Earn and churn.
That's a new one, okay, earn and churn.
I have a question.
Yep.
Um, so I'm new to this kind of thing, and, um, reading the report, I just wanted to see if you could provide an example for me of what an indirect effect is for the multiplier effects?
Yeah, um, that's a good question. So, uh, when we talk about, um, so an initial effect is, uh, so your, your college spends money on, uh, let's look at the, thinking about the operations spending impact. The direct effect is when your college spends money, uh, on, you know, maintenance. So they might, might be landscaping, they pay somebody to do landscaping, uh, and then, you know, whoever they paid then goes and spends that money. So that's just that second level of spending. Uh, how much of that is still in the region? Uh, you know, at, at kind of each, each time that money is spent, if you could track, you know, a single dollar spent, uh, each time that dollar is spent, it has a greater and greater likelihood to leave your region. Um, so that's kind of why, why we have multiple levels there, uh, to track that spending. Does that, hopefully that's helpful.
So, like, you're, kind of, your example of landscaping, this would be the landscapers going to a local nursery to purchase plants, and that's, that indirect effect?
Yes, that, that could be indirect. And then that nursery is again, going to go spend money on, on, you know, their own, whatever they spend money on. So, um, you know, we're, we're looking at multiple levels of spending, and sometimes the money amplifies, uh, through, through various investments. Uh, they may have, you know, built something that has value, um, that, that, you know, adds value to your region. So that amplifies beyond just the dollar spent.
Thank you.
Next section, I guess.
Perfect. I'll go ahead and keep moving. So the next section here is the investment analysis. So what we do here is we project benefits into the future, uh, from these three different perspectives. Uh, so every stakeholder is putting something into your college, uh, and we want to measure what benefits are they going to receive. So first, we'll look at your, your student perspective. Uh, your students are paying tuition and, uh, some fees, they buy books. We also figure into their costs some opportunity cost. Uh, so in other words, they could have been working during, during some of the time they were attending. Uh, so the great question is, is it worth all these costs to attend? Uh, so your students are seeing about 16.7 million dollars in present value costs, uh, across your student body. Uh, this is coming from about 10.7 million in out-of-pocket expenses and another, uh, 6 million in that foregone time and money. So what are they going to get for all that? Um, so how we measure this is by, uh, measuring your students' increased earnings. Uh, so we collected your students', um, level of education that they had at the beginning of, of their school year, and then we collected what they achieved during the year. Uh, and so we're measuring, uh, their increased income based on, uh, increased potential income based on the education they received. So an example would be, you know, if a student comes to you with a high school diploma and they leave with an associate's degree, uh, on average, they're going to see a little over 8,000 dollars per year of, of higher earnings. So based on the students', uh, education that they receive during, during our analysis year, uh, your students will receive about 348,000 dollars in increased lifetime earnings, uh, per students. And that accumulates to about 327 million dollars, uh, in higher future earnings. Uh, so that's across your students' working, uh, your whole student body and across their whole, uh, working life. So that gives us a benefit-cost ratio of about 19.5. Uh, so what that means is that for every dollar that your students are spending, uh, to attend college during this analysis year, they will receive back 19 dollars and 50 cents in higher future earnings. Uh, as an annualized rate of return, that's about 42%. Uh, so as a comparison, the stock market 30-year average, uh, is about 10%. So your students are receiving over four times, uh, what they could receive in the stock market. Um, so this is a really tremendous rate of return. Um, I, I really believe this is a, a good number for you all to highlight, uh, if you're, if you're looking to recruit students or to prove to anybody that, uh, you're adding a lot of value here, uh, to your students. So next, we can look at your taxpayer perspective. So how much, what we're doing here is we're measuring how much new taxpayer revenue, uh, is generated based on your students' increased earnings. Uh, so we see about 119 million dollars in added taxes, and that's the main benefit that we look at, uh, in this perspective. But we also include, uh, what we call some social savings. Um, so these are things that are generic to higher education. Uh, so for example, um, students, uh, with higher education are less likely to need welfare assistance, they're less likely to need healthcare assistance, or be incarcerated. Uh, so we call these things social savings. They're saving taxpayer money, uh, by, by achieving these higher levels of education. Uh, so that's adding about 26 more, a million more dollars, uh, to the taxpayer, uh, benefits, uh, which shows about 145 million dollars in total benefits to the taxpayer. So that gives us that benefit-cost ratio of about one and a half. So for every dollar that the taxpayer spends, uh, to, to run the college, they will receive back a dollar and 50 cents in higher future earnings. Uh, so this is a really good number to see. It's good to know that the taxpayer is getting back more than what they're, uh, more than what it costs them, uh, to run the college. Obviously, not every, you know, taxpayer investment, uh, returns more money back than, than what it costs. So finally, we'll look at the, the social perspective. Um, so here, we're looking at society as a whole in California. Um, so this includes the taxpayer perspective, it also includes students, private citizens, and businesses. Uh, so really, what we're doing in this perspective is we're looking at all, uh, all costs, uh, to run the college, whether it be student costs, uh, all, all other taxpayer costs, and then we're comparing that against all the benefits. So businesses are benefiting, obviously, students are benefiting significantly, um, so what are all those, uh, societal benefits? So we see about 168 million dollars in, in costs, uh, and then we're seeing about 1.8 billion dollars in, uh, higher future benefits. So I do want to show, uh, away from our PowerPoint here. So this is part of your executive summary, and this figure is, is just breaking out where, um, those benefits to society are. So as you can see, the total is, is 1.8 billion. We see about 1.2 billion going to, um, added student income. So your students are earning more money. Uh, but another big number I, I like to point out here, uh, is added business income, over 400 million dollars in added business income because your students are, uh, more productive, so they make your region's businesses more productive. They're also earning more, so they can spend more. Uh, so that's a really nice benefit to, to businesses in your area. So the societal benefit-cost ratio is about 10.8. Uh, so again, for every dollar spent, uh, by society, there'll be about 10 dollars and 80 cents returned, uh, to society in higher future benefits. So this report, uh, you know, this, this gives, um, kind of a, a higher-level view, uh, of what we did in our study, uh, the results and such. Overall, we see a really strong bit, uh, really strong impact to your region, over 6,000 jobs supported. Your students are getting a tremendous, uh, value for, for their education. Taxpayers are getting more money back, um, than, than what it costs them. Uh, and then society as a whole is getting some really significant benefits. So, uh, overall, yeah, this is, um, a, a really great study. So do you all have any questions at this time over, over any of the study?
Student trustee?
How do you rank us in California against other, against other states that you've done? I mean, can, I mean, are we above the average, are we average, or, I mean, where, where do we stand?
Um, so I, I'm going to cap, I'll give you an answer, but I, I'm going to caveat it. Um, so every region is very different. Um, you know, obviously, the number of students you have makes a huge difference, makes a huge impact. Uh, you know, each region has different industries and different economies that, that make a big difference. So, um, not everything is necessarily under the college's control. Uh, but with that being said, uh, your, your student, um, return on investment is tremendously high. Uh, we typically see, um, you know, I'm just going to kind of go off the memory, uh, we benchmark between 10 and 20. 20 would be tremendously high. Um, so you're right at that, kind of the top that what I typically see for a student return on investment. Uh, for taxpayers and that, that taxpayer benefit-cost ratio, you're about right in the middle, uh, compared to other, other colleges in California that I've worked with recently. Um, we typically see, uh, between one and two. We, we really don't like to see anything below one because obviously that means, uh, that there's not more, uh, you know, there's the same amount of money returned or, or less to taxpayers. So, um, that's, that's obviously not ideal. Uh, and then again, with, with, uh, society, you're kind of right in the middle, uh, for, compared to other colleges that I've seen as well. So, um, yeah, that's, that's, uh, kind of my opinion, uh, but, um, that's, that's what I've seen.
So Phase Two will be ready when? Your, your next part will be completed when?
Uh, so we haven't really kicked it off yet. Uh, so this is going to depend on, um, a few choices. Uh, so obviously, we're, it's primarily over a different region. We do have that option to go ahead and use some 2023 data if you should choose to. That would prolong our timeline because that means we would have to collect a bit more data. Um, but, you know, so we'll, we'll end up talking, I think, uh, oh, probably with Virginia and, and ironing some of those details out. Our typical project runs 12 to 28 weeks. Uh, this would be on the shorter end of that because, um, because it's a much smaller project. So I would say two to three months would be, would be probably, three months would probably be max, uh, for, for the next phase.
Any other questions?
I don't have a problem.
I think you got to come to the microphone now so he can hear you. I don't think he'll be able to hear you without that.
I, I can't hear that.
You're going to do a better, Jane, you're going to do a better job than I do. You've got a very pinpointed question, I would feel.
Yeah. I was going to volunteer, and you started your question, I owe no.
No.
I'm curious about the variability in the, in the numbers year to year and how change in enrollment, um, might affect them? Is that, is that, um, yeah, how much, like, on percentage-wise, how much has changed?
Did you understand that?
Yeah, so, yes, I did, thank you. Um, so obviously, that's really difficult to say. Um, enrollment numbers have, have a very significant impact. Uh, let's say, you know, for example, if a college has declining enrollment, uh, declining enrollment for the last 10 years, uh, then their alumni impact would be significantly, uh, hurt because of that. Um, you know, obviously, the student impact is directly, um, correlated to how many students are, are coming to their region. Um, so that's going to have a very significant impact. Uh, as far as, you know, there's, there can be some very big just economic changes. For example, you know, we, during, during COVID, we were seeing a bit lower of an in, of, uh, impacts, uh, and, and return on investments because, um, you know, people just weren't spending money. Uh, people were staying in, you know, good reasons for that. Also, we're seeing, uh, kind of a, a reasonably new phenomenon in the last, you know, two to, two to three years, uh, we're seeing increases in migration. So, you know, people just tend to not live where they grew up, uh, they're more likely, or less likely to live where they grew up. So just people are less, are more likely to leave the region and leave their state. Um, so even though they're spending money in another region, uh, you know, they're not, you're, you would not be seeing that return on investment. So those are some really big impacts, uh, that we've seen to our analysis, uh, fairly recently. Uh, we do update our, our model, uh, every few months and, uh, just keep up with, you know, current data and everything and, you know, new economic trends and such. So it, it does change pretty significantly over time. Uh, and that's, you know, there, there's kind of, uh, a couple of big reasons, um, that, uh, that things could change. Obviously, the, the college's inputs can change a lot, uh, and then the region can change a lot, your, your regional economy can, you know, industries can come and go, businesses can come and go. And then, of course, our own methodology, uh, is constantly updated to be as accurate as possible. So those are kind of the three big reasons for change. I'm not sure I can give a percent, um, uh, that, that it can change. I've definitely seen some colleges, uh, pretty rare, but I, I think maybe once I saw a college change by, by almost 50%. Um, but they had some pretty significant, um, internal changes because of that, so.
So Isaac, uh, one of the things that, this is President Walden. Uh, so one of the things that sticks out is the '21, '22 year was really a COVID year. So I think that probably affected, uh, the outcomes. Also, the last two years, '22, '23, and '23, '24, the college grew by 50% in enrollment. So, you know, I just feel like that with new, this new data coming out, um, and coming now that, away from COVID, you know what might be more of a, a picture of? And maybe it's not time to, what'd you call that, churn and? What'd you call it, a burn and churn or?
Burn and churn.
Huh?
Burn and churn, but as the number increases, we approach the mean, right?
So whatever, maybe I'm complicated the, the picture, but anyway, that was, I think, I, what I was getting out of, uh, Jane's, uh, comments is that, you know, the variability in the numbers versus, you know, the, the changes in enrollment.
Yeah, and I would certainly, if you were to, to maintain maybe not 50%, but significant growth over the next, you know, three to five years, um, it's likely that your, your alumni impact would, would increase significantly. Of course, your student impact, you know, if you have more students, that student impact, uh, will increase significantly. Um, al- although, you know, sometimes that taxpayer, um, benefit-cost ratio doesn't necessarily increase because that's, uh, not necessarily determined by how many students, but, but, you know, the return for each individual. Uh, sorry, uh, the tax, I meant, I meant the student impact. So, um, yeah, um, there, there's lots of variability. Uh, those increasing alumni numbers, um, will, will certainly, certainly have an impact. Um, we do typically see, you know, students or, or colleges with very, very small, um, student counts tend to have very high cost per student. Um, so you all are, are, seem to be, uh, kind of above that threshold where, uh, you're able to keep those administration costs lower, is what it looks like to me, uh, you know, on the per-student level, which is one reason that your, um, student benefit-cost ratio is so high. So, yeah, hopefully that, that helps explain a little bit. Um, obviously, it's, it's very difficult to predict the exact changes, um, because there can be two or three big things that change, uh, from one analysis to the next, but. And if we do have, uh, you know, another analysis in the future, uh, we, we typically will, um, look at, uh, in, in some detail to make sure there's no kind of off-the-wall changes, to make sure, you know, nothing's, nothing's abnormal. Um, so we can kind of do a detailed comparison, uh, if we, if we do do another study in the future to, to make sure we know what's really changing.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate this, and we look forward to the next report.
If, if I could make a suggestion, he, he did talk about if we wanted to use some more recent data, the '23, uh, would delay the next report, but that would get us more recent data. I'm just one voice, but I think that the coronavirus problem, I, I would imagine is really affecting these numbers. And I'd be, I'd be willing to wait a little while for report number two to have more recent data.
I absolutely agree.
For my, my standpoint, so.
Well, and, and, and it helps, you know, there's some data in here that go back to the taxpayers and the students and the value to the students and from our recruiting standpoint, absolutely. I mean, I, I don't think we can get it quick enough, but the question is, how quick can we get that report with the '23 data?
So we'll work with him on that and, uh, we'll have, uh, you, I think it'd be good, Jenny, for you and I to have a conversation, uh, with him. And we'll get, so to launch the next phase of the study. Okay? Thank you, Isaac.
See you, Isaac.
Yeah, thank you for having me. If any more questions come up, uh, feel free to, to, uh, send an email, I'm happy to, to answer anything further, so. Thank you for your time and thank you for having me.
So I don't know, uh, they kind of summarized ASP goals last. So I don't know, uh, they kind of summarized ASP goals last month for this year, and I know you're going to start doing this year. Did you have any comment on ASP goals?
Coming soon.
To your local team.
Uh, in regard to facilities, uh, so I have to take back my, uh, letter that I sent to the board this week. Uh, I was cautioned today that, uh, it's very, very tentative that we would have the next board meeting, uh, in the new building, so. Just, I hate to, uh, uh, we're not gonna take possession of the building until it's absolutely ready to take and we've tested out. We can't just walk in there, we gotta make sure things work, that they've been tested and, um, it doesn't fall down on you in the very first meeting.
Definitely won't fall down.
Morley, there's no pressure, is there, Kevin?
Definitely won't fall down.
So that said, uh, let's go to the foundation. Oh, she has that good news, look about her.
We love it.
Good evening, everyone. I have a, a video, surprise, surprise, of course. If Tim would start that. Okay, so I too want to recap a little bit about graduation because I haven't seen you all. I saw you that evening, but you didn't see all the behind the scenes thing. So these are some pictures of our graduation party, what was going on, you know, where the, the graduates were entering, and we were giving them snacks and water. Chris is in the middle with his microphone entertaining the masses, as you can see. Um, next slide, please. And so we encourage people to join our alumni association, which, to the point of the presentation of the alumni, the importance of staying connected with alumni as they leave and they make more money and we keep in touch with them, then, then they give back to the foundation. And we're seeing that a little bit more. But as an incentive, we did offer the, um, a $25 gift card, two $25 gift cards. And the students that were up there were the recipients of those gift cards. You can see them there. Um, and then can I give you some fun facts about the alumnis? They, we did a Google poll of the students that joined the alumni association. We're looking through this transference thing here, right? It's okay. Um, so of the, we had over 200 sign up. Of them, um, 67% prefer Instagram as their communication platform. That's good for us to know, right, as we're marketing to them. Um, 60% are transferring to a four-year university. And the names Amber and Amanda were the most common name of the people that joined. Like this was all Google Analytics. Uh, math and science was the most popular major among the alumni. And most of the folks that joined our alumni association, uh, started BBC in 2021. So those are our fast track, you know, students making it through. So anyhow, I wanted to share that with you. Uh, next slide, please. So here I have a little video. So Art, always thank you for including us in this, the pre-party. I think we've been doing it two years, three years, this is our third year. Um, so, yeah, we're, we're in, we're lifers, so. Um, we did receive, um, an endowment of $183,000 from Elaine Clapp. And she, let me tell you a little bit about her. Um, she's actually from the East Coast, never had children, settled in Apple Valley, passed away at 96. And education was in, in her heart, and she left $183,000 to the foundation that we just received. Yeah, wonderful, right? Yeah.
Are there any survivors to her?
No, they had no children. She was married to a Colonel. She's traveled to all seven continents before her death and, um, never had any children, but loved. She donated to the Victor Valley Museum, to St. Jude's, and to the foundation.
Wow, amazing.
Yeah, very nice. Yeah, and one more slide I have as a reminder. For our next event, High Desert Education Summit, mark your calendars on October 18th, um, 7:30 AM start. Um, and the program will begin at nine, and the pro, we'll be announcing as we roll out our program and I, the itinerary and the agenda. Hope you can be there. Thank you.
Quick, quick question. I think, you know, talk about the economic, the dollars that we bring in and the number of students who've been here. Now, many years ago, there was a contest to find the, okay, the great alumni.
Yeah.
How many people have we graduated? So I, I'd, I'd like you to maybe prepare a report for maybe the September, maybe in our new building. How many people graduated from here and how many people are we still in contact with? And what kind of money are they bringing in here? I, I think, uh, I, I'd like to know.
I'll see what kind of data I can pull on that.
Really happen on us. I mean, i- i- what, what more would you suggest that we do that, that we gotta army with it in order to get it?
I agree, yeah. We need to focus on our alumni. Yeah, I'll get as much information as I can from them.
Yeah, great, thanks.
You're welcome.
Good job.
So, um, I'd like to conclude my comments tonight by wishing Monica Martinez a happy birthday.
And if we get out of here by 7:30, she's buying everybody ice cream at Baskin Robbins.
There you go.
It's 7:27, Monica, see you tomorrow.
I feel like it's a little tradition that we sing it.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Monica. Happy birthday to you.
You gotta be careful of those that email you really nicely tonight or tomorrow, asking for favors, right? With happy birthday.
And we successfully just made your birthday worse.
Yeah. So now everybody knows.
All right, I'm done.
Drop the mic.
I'm gonna make a suggestion that we take.
Monica will see you in the parking lot, yeah.
I'm gonna make a suggestion that, uh, we can be in for seven minutes for a technology break and be back at 7:35. I know, me too, I'm like. Okay, Morley?
Oh, my God.
We want to get you and Kevin to bed early. We know you guys go to sleep early.
Snitch.
Do we have anybody from the academic senate here tonight?
Uh, yes.
We do.
Jane, you wanna come give a report?
Is it working? There it is. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Jane Montgomery, and I'm representing the academic senate tonight. So a brief overview of what's going on with the senate right now. We, um, we had a last minute resignation at the end of the spring term. So our, um, our process is that our vice president automatically ascends to the presidency after their two-year term. However, that person resigned. And so while I was nominated to become vice president, the assumption is that as soon as the elections finalized, I'll become president of the academic senate, which is, um, a bit of a challenge for me because I don't have any experience in the academic senate, but, um, I'm learning a lot. And so the elections are gonna be finalized in the fall. Um, we're gonna try to convene a committee, um, essentially the second we get back to, to classes in, um, August 26th. And so we should hopefully get that done by the end of September and we should have, um, a vice president elected. Then we'll have to run another set of elections to, um, once I ascend to the presidency, to reelect a vice president. So I'll first be vice president and then the next day president, and then another election for vice president. Does that make sense?
Kind of like Washington right now, right? You can't figure out who's gonna be president or vice president?
Yeah, yeah. Um, but it should go pretty quickly, so hopefully by October, we'll have a full functioning, um, academic senate. And in the meantime, I have, um, our past presidents authorization to sort of represent, um, what there is of the senate at the moment. So I was, uh, fortunate to go to the, um, ASC leadership institute a couple of weeks back, and that was really amazing. I learned a lot. I'm really excited. Um, even though I know it's gonna be challenging, I'm looking forward to this as an opportunity. And I just hope that, um, I can do a decent job for all of us at the college. Thank you.
We are sure, we are sure that you can, and you've got some great leaders in your group that I'm sure will help you. Uh, AFT, part-time faculty and united, anybody? Uh, ASB?
Hello again, so. As you know, ASB will be leaving for retreat from Thursday until Sunday. And we're excited with the students that we are bringing, and hopefully we'll get those goals to you guys soon and we'll see, see what happens in the next year.
Great. Uh, CSEA?
They sent a message that they weren't able to attend tonight, but that, uh, things were good, everybody's happy.
That's good. That's a great report. CTA?
No, not.
It's like a great political speech, sure. Management, are you for management here?
No, I don't think anyone got a point, no.
Richard didn't get a point?
No one got a point.
Means we'll get home earlier now. Okay, consent agenda. All matters listed on a consent agenda are considered by the board trustees to be routine. They've been approved by the president superintendent under Board Policy 2430. There'll be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time of the board votes on them, unless a board member requests a specific item to be removed from the consent agenda for discussion in a separate vote. Public comment on consent items from anyone completing a card will be heard prior to the board's vote. Public comment on consent items from anyone completing a card will be heard prior to the Board's vote on the consent agenda item. 10.1, Public Comment Announcement Regarding Consent Agenda Items. The complete written request to address the Board shall be submitted before the beginning of the open session portion of the meeting. This is the opportunity for the public to address the Board on any consent agenda items. Public comments are limited to three minutes per individual and total 15 minutes per topic. Speakers will be timed electronically, and all speakers will be called to the podium to speak at the appropriate time to address the Board. Only those who have been recognized by the Board President, the Board may will be permitted to speak under Board Policy 2350. Do we have anybody on, that wishes to speak? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Wood and a second by Trustee Tarpley.
Just to note that items were pulled.
Yes.
But they are not to be considered, they were pulled out of the agenda.
Yep, correct. Student trustee?
Yes.
I could feel you looking at me going, is she going to get it right, right now?
Okay.
Is it working its way around the world?
There it is.
Bingo. How'd you get yours before I got mine?
Technology?
Action Agenda: The complete written request to address the Board shall be submitted at the beginning of the open session portion of the meeting. Individuals who want to comment on action items may do so by, or after being recognized by the Board President, before a Board discussion on a particular item during the meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes per individual and total 15 minutes per topic. Speakers will be timed electronically, and all speakers will be called upon at the appropriate time to speak. Only those who have been recognized by Board President will be permitted to speak under Board Policy 2350. Do we have any public comments on action items? Nope. 12.1, we've already had that. 12.2, we have a second read approval of Board Policy 2015, which I believe has been amended with, with a correction of July 1st. Is that correct, Dr. Walton? Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion by Trustee Tarpley, second by Trustee Wood. Student trustee?
Yes.
You know, I should have said to Monica, if we got out here by eight o'clock, she'd be buying ice cream, but...
I mean, shouldn't we buy her the ice cream?
Well, I think she would have told me she forgot her credit card or something. We would have helped her out. Think slow.
I think it's cold.
It was slow earlier today, too.
Was really? It's like ready to break down, and knows it's going to be replaced.
Don't tell him.
No, it's still, look at this. I could get a stiff neck. That's, it's not your fault.
You're fine.
Owen, I'm sorry, I'm moving on.
Wait, we just got it, it just popped up?
Just popped up.
It just popped up.
Okay.
Perfect.
So, let's warn, if it happens again, we're just going to shut it off and do a manu, right?
Yes.
Good. Another vote popped up at the toll booth. I can get this button for an execution. Sure tough.
Here it is. Boom.
Wow.
There we go.
We got it. Cool.
Don't stress.
It's like, it's like landing on Mars now, okay? Not, not to move on Mars, okay, cool. Okay. 14.1 Agreement. Caitlin Kempler, Independent Contractor, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Wood and a second by Trustee Tarpley. Student trustee?
Yes.
You say that so nicely.
There it is. You've got your rhythm now.
Okay. I got mine. Let's see. We're going to replace you. Oh, wow. 14.2 Cambridge West Partnership LLC, an Amendment to an Agreement. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Trustee Wood?
Second.
Second by Trustee Tarpley.
So, we, we were already in a partnership with them, uh, to help us with some things. But then, uh, when John, uh, searched for his position, it was a failed search. We needed to bring in someone who could advise us and do basically his work. So, Monica is the official signer, is the CBO, and I also signed for the district. We're, we're having them review all documents, contracts, and things. This is their specialty. And they initial them when they're legal and ready to go and are appropriate. So, uh, then that's what Monica and I know to sign. So, uh, this is amending the, the, we're paying for this out of, um, the fact that we no longer pay John Nolan.
Right.
And hopefully, uh, PPL is helping us through the search. This fall, we should be getting a new CBO.
Right. Student trustee?
Yes.
By the way, if you interact, uh, the point person is Mary Gallagher, Dr. Mary Gallagher. I've known her for 20-something years, worked with her. This is my third college to have worked with her at, so. And she was the president the last year I was at L.A. City.
And Dr. Walton speaks very highly of her, I can tell you. Did a vote come in yet?
They did.
Okay. 15.1, Provision to Classified Job Description for Store Keeper. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion by Trustee Wood, uh, second by Trustee Tarpley. Student trustee?
Yes.
15.2, New Classified Job Description Salary Replacement for Senior Storekeeper. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Tarpley, a second by Trustee Wood. Student trustee?
Yes.
15.3 Non-Classified Short-Term Employees. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Trustee Wood, uh, second by Trustee Tarpley. Student trustee?
Yes.
15.4 Contractor Employment for the Executive Director of Instruction, Recapturing, and Enrollment. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
I want to point out that we edited this to delete the recapturing enrollment part.
Got it.
With just Executive Director of the...
Instruction, correct. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Tarpley and a second by Trustee Deverikas. Student trustee?
Yes.
Did I get it right?
Yes, you did.
Wow. Whole time. Nothing worse than what you're doing in public, you know? You laughing at me? What? What?
I'm going to change your last name.
Yeah. Jones.
Says, says Miss Evil Sizer.
I wasn't going to go there. But you can.
But you know what? I'm always asked, I'm always asked, I related to Tom Brady. I said, I got his money and I got his skills.
Oh.
Okay. So, that one passed. 15.5 Employment Agreement, Interim Executive Director of Recapturing Enrollment. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Trustee Tarpley, a second by Trustee Wood, Dr. Walton.
Not edited.
Not edited. Student trustee?
Yes.
Trustee Tarpley is waiting for me to forget.
I'm, no, I'm not. I'm so proud of you.
You're thinking, man, he's batting a hundred.
I'm rooting for you, buddy.
We have a new trustee here. I don't want her to think I was like, totally, you know?
By the way, this position is Chris Piercey's position, so that you know. I told him he didn't need to bother coming, you already knew him, but he's been working his butt off right there. But, uh, anyway, this 15.5 was retro to the first of the, of this month, and it ends tonight. So, your vote, it just was through the ninth, because in the previous item, he got hired in the permanent position. So, we didn't want him to miss any time of service to purge, because that can mess up your retirement, if he ever decides to retire. We hope he doesn't.
I don't think that's in, yeah.
Uh, but anyway, that's who this is.
He, he's, he's an absolute rock star, one of the best, uh, associates that, that we have here. And I, the article that he sent out today, or Dr. Walton's out, it was kind of sobering about students. I, I wrote back, said, we need to have more babies out there, so. Okay. So, student trustee?
Yes.
You already voted? Academic Equivalency, Megan White. Do I have a motion?
Motion, motion.
Second.
Oh, we have a motion by Trustee Deverikas and a second by...
You?
Trustee Tarpley.
I was second.
Oh, you're a second? Oh, okay. So, you're going to make me do that again? So, we have a, we had a motion by Trustee Tarpley and a second by Trustee Deverikas. Okay. So, now I've done it like four times, now, okay. Great. Student trustee?
Yes.
It was a test to see if they were among. 18.1 Emeritus Crystal White. Dr. Walton?
So, these are all discussion items. Uh, 18.1, 2.6, there's no action on any of this? So, uh, these are just for information and discussion.
So, do we have any discussion on 18.1? 18.2?
Congratulations.
Yes.
Anything for 18.3?
This thing was, oh.
Oh, yeah. 18.3 is something I asked to, to replace. So, we, we don't have anything for 18.2, right?
18, well, that's Michelle and Florine just giving them distinguished service.
Oh, okay. So, they should have their names on there. Okay.
It is. It's on there.
Okay.
18.3, um, so, the dedication plaque for the Educational Events Center. I found out last month that, uh, for, I don't know for what reason, but, uh, LPA had been directed to delete the plaque from the building. So, they did not design it. And so, I've since, I'm working with Morley, and we're going to have a plaque. There has been a change in trusteeship. So, normally, we have the names of trustees and the President of the College. Sometimes you put the architect and the, uh, contractor on the plaque.
And I'd suggest we don't do that.
I, what I, well, what I said is, if they will pay for it, pay for the design and pay for the manufacturing, because they are expensive, then we would consider that. But if they're not willing to pay for it, which I don't think they are, then we're not going to put their name on the plaque. So, but if the Board feels differently, and you don't want them under any circumstance, that's fine. But the real question is, um, do, there's a couple, there's three ways you could do this. You can do the five trustees that served, uh, during the time of the building. Or you could do the five that are currently on, the second way. Or a third way is to, for the Board to, and we have to put this on a future active agenda, you have it on next month, designate, uh, Dennis Henderson as trustee emeritus, and all six of you can go on the plaque. I mean, Dennis is the sixth person as trustee emeritus. So, you need to discuss and give me a sense of what you want to do, and then I can know how to proceed. I'm giving you three different options.
I, I suggested to, to Dr. Walton, I feel that, that Dennis should have his name on there. I don't know if I can support Bernard Brothers or LPA to have their name on there at all. And I personally would rather not even go ask him for the money. I don't know what it costs to put up that plaque, but, you know, when you ask him, you're kind of, so I can hear if we ever have on, if there's ever an issue, I got to be careful about what I say, that they say, wow, they were so happy, they asked us to put the name on the building. And in front of a group of, you know, legal people, I don't think it'd go over very well. So, I do believe that Dennis has earned his right to be on, on that plaque. Um, I also do believe that, that our new, um, trustee is, is a part of the five, that, that, whose name fall on there, that he would be well-served to be emeritus. That's just...
I agree. I think, um, I think Laura's name needs to be on the plaque. I think the plaque is a, is a dedication plaque, which is the day of the ribbon-cutting ceremony. It's the day the, the building is opened. The nursing facility was well under construction when I came on the Board, but I was on the Board at the ribbon-cutting, and my name's on that plaque. So, I believe that the, the five trustees listed should be the five of us that are sitting here. But I also have, I have no problem with Dennis going on as a, in an emeritus or honorary as well, in a sixth position. But I think the five should be the five current trustees on the day the building is opened.
Well, and I would say leave the people out that made this such a late opening.
We're going to come to a decision pretty quick.
Okay. I hear you on that, to just decide on the emeritus thing.
Are we all in agreement on the emeritus? Case closed? Good. Great. Our next one is 18.4, Discussion of Honoring Trustee Dennis Henderson. At the, I can't remember what month it was, it's been a long year, I think, what, May? I'd asked Dr. Walton and the Board here to, to put this on here to kind of talk about, you know, what, what we do for Dennis, his longest-standing trustee ever. Uh, I had made a suggestion, uh, that maybe, you know, we name the public safety building out there in, in his behalf, because it came from law enforcement. Uh, and so, this is just, this is just a discussion item on where this Board wants to go. There's no set, there's no set direction. It's just whatever everybody wants to do that, that they feel comfortable.
So, what I was thinking of, if the Board would discuss this and throw out your different ideas, then I'll take this and bring you back options of what I hear tonight. So, unless you happen to be consensus of something. But assuming you're going to have different ideas, uh, we can go work on and bring you back, uh, options, but you need to give us your thoughts. So, Joe's got one thought, the rest of you can, and maybe he's got another one, I don't know, but...
I would say this about the building naming. Uh, typically, I think, under Board Policy, um, there's, there's typically an amount of money that would go with naming a building. I think it's typically a million dollars. Uh, so, that would be something that the Board would have to say, okay, well, we're doing this for one person, you know? Or do we do something else? So, I, I, I want to throw that out, because you'll have other people say, I want to give money, but, you know, they...
So I, I, I wanna throw that out because you'll have other people say, I wanna give money, but you know, they, so. Not everybody speaking once. Student trustee?
That's just mean. He made you go first.
You can be nice.
Do you not wanna go first?
I really don't know what to say at the moment because I wasn't on the board with Dennis, but I know he was a great board member. So I do think there should be something dedicated to him, but I'd love to hear ideas and options.
All right. This is like the most treacherous thing to step into. I like Dennis very much. So I wanna start there, that I like him very much and I have the utmost respect for the number of years that he served on the board.
Earth.
He's calling.
Brandon.
He's calling you from up there. Saying, be careful, dude, what you say.
Well, they've been building after you, Dennis.
But now he wants more. He was hoping to get out of Bear Valley Road.
The whole campus now. No, I mean, I really like Dennis and he was here for a long time and I have all the respect in the world for all the years of service, but, and I'll, I'll speak only for myself. You know, I love what I do up here as a trustee, but at the same time, I also recognize that my contributions to this campus are like a millionth of a percent
Right.
of the contributions of all of you in the audience and all of the people that you're here representing and all the people that you work with. Whether that's full-time faculty, part-time faculty, administration, you know, CSEA, the classified, part-time, full-time. What I do up here, even on my best day, is like a millionth of a percent of, of what all of you do. So it's kind of that position of you say, well, we're, we're all pretty close up here, we all know each other really well. We all miss Dennis, we are all shocked, we are all upset at his passing. And then I look and I say, well, like going to that extreme, is it disproportionate? We've had a lot of people who've worked on this campus that have retired, that have died, that, that certainly did a whole lot more in one day than I've done in the whole twelve years that I've been on the board, right? They contributed more in a day than I've done in twelve years. Like I recognize our position and the significance of our position or the insignificance of our position. And so you say like, are, are we to some extent disparaging all the hard work that those people put in, day in and day out, from sunup to sundown, for the betterment of our students, for the betterment of our campus, for the betterment of our, our BBC community? And they got a, oh man, I'm really sorry to hear about the passing of, and on to the next issue. So it's, it's it's like a really crappy thing to say and I get it regarding Dennis, again, because I really liked him. I have all the respect in the world for how many years he served on the board. I know how much he cared about the school, about the students, about everybody on campus. And then I just contrast that with, with the contributions of, of everybody currently and past. And, and not that Dennis is not deserving of such an honor, but there are hundreds, if not thousands, of people that are equally or more deserving, who didn't get the honor and it, and it, it could kind of get out of control because we're in a position to do it and we could do it. And, and we're not doing it for anybody else. And so it's, I just wonder if it's not like a little bit, somebody correct me, that's a lot smarter than me, if it's not a little nepotistic? Is that the right word? Anyone nepotistic? Is it? Kelly K, how you're laughing, so it must be the right word. Is it a little nepotistic of us to, to do that, you know? Is it, is it, is it too much? Is it overboard? Is it, is it kind of a reaction out of emotion? Which is, is, you know, was pointed out earlier tonight, emotions tend to be the, the strongest factor in decision-making. And, and so like, I didn't wanna say this, I certainly didn't wanna say it publicly. I didn't even really wanna think it because I kind of feel like a jerk for even thinking it. But I think that my thoughts are probably in the right place, even though I feel like I'm
Being disrespectful, yeah.
being kind of mean to Dennis. And so it's, it's the balance between, he was our friend, he was our co-trustee, he served for a long time, I liked the guy. And at the same time, you've gotta look at the big picture. And, and I also would, would, just practically speaking, I have a feeling that such a drastic gesture would also probably be very expensive. And so then I start to think about, well, are we gonna spend X number of dollars to smash a name up on a building to honor our friend? Or are we gonna spend that money in some way that better students? And so to anyone else in the room who, who liked Dennis or loved Dennis, I apologize. And I, I feel like a jerk for being the one to say it, but I, I feel like, I just feel like it's too much. And I think it's too much, you know, kind of favoritism. And I would say that if I die, and I hope not to, please do not even have the discussion about putting my name on the building. Maybe like a urinal, that'd be cool. Memorial urinal or something.
That's ridiculous.
Something that would last like a really long time.
If you guys really like me, like a whole stall.
O M G, and cut the mic. Cut the mic.
Like, please, if.
Art, it's for the guy that needs everything, right?
That stems from a thing. I went to, to Chapman Law School and they were always begging for money. I mean, they, they were constantly begging for money. You could buy a chair, a single chair in the library and they'd put a little like brass plaque on the back of it. Basically, every single thing in, in our law school had a price tag on it for a donor. So you could buy a chair in the library. A lot, it was a really expensive chair, like a hundred thousand dollars for a chair. They put a little plaque, the Joseph Brady Chair, in the library, right? So as law students, we would always joke, because, you know, we're broke law students, we're not in a position, so we would always joke around and say, hey, how much for a urinal? So that's kind of where that joke comes from.
They would never sell us one.
Yeah, no, it wasn't a Navy thing, it was a law school thing, but also needed to lighten up my own mood there in the middle of that. I think it's a little drastic. I think it's also expensive. I think we should look for, for something that's, that's reasonably sized and reasonably priced to, to honor our friend, that, that would be of an appropriate size, size gesture. And I would say, let's keep in mind that when we built the, the One Stop, Dr. Wagner, who was instrumental in that, who was kind of the mastermind behind that, we, we present, we presented a, a single conference room with a, a nice plaque in the conference room in honor of Dr. Wagner, which he was elated about. And so I think when we, we measure, you know, Dr. Wagner got a conference room in the One Stop, naming a thirteen acre sub-campus after a fellow trustee. I, I, I don't, I just kind of feel like it's maybe a, it's drastic and maybe it's in bad taste and it, and it's maybe disrespectful to the the hundreds or thousands of people who come here every day and, and put in a full day's work here and, and do a whole lot more than we do. And so unless we're gonna start, you know, naming buildings after Art Lopez and Sewell and, and Todd Scott and Monica and forget about John Nolan, he quit, so forget that guy, but. And, and quite frankly, everyone else out there, you know, it's, it's, I don't know, I feel like a jerk for saying it, but it had to be said, so, sorry, Dennis.
Nobody else? I, I, I would say this, trustee Wood, I think everything you said is, is, is a million percent correct. When I made the, the comment, it was intended to do, I think, what we just did. I had two other people reach out to me and say, wow, that was pretty bold. I said, well, you know, somebody's gotta start the conversation somewhere. So I think that we need to do something.
I was gonna ask a question. Can you start like a scholarship in his name or?
Well, there, there, I, I think the board, I think it's kind of up to us to come with, 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 with just an idea. I think that, I think the, the other comment tonight about emotions, at the time we think back on it, it was, you know, it was, it was kind of new and, and, you know, some people were pretty involved and, and I've seen some things since. I'm not gonna get into conversation-wise publicly, but it's, it's intended to just be a conversation piece, so. And I think any idea is just, just a good idea and, and trustee Wood, I absolutely one hundred, one million percent support everything you said.
Yeah, I don't think you should feel like a jerk at all. I mean, that's a really great. Your points were very valid.
Are you talking to me or him?
Both of you.
Oh.
But.
I feel a lot of, wait, why don't you move over here so I can sit next to you?
I just, I think you're, you were, you said what I was thinking, you know? Same thing, I'm like, ooh, I don't, that's a lot. So I, I like what Sharon just said about maybe putting together a scholarship. Maybe each of us can donate for the upcoming school year in his name or something of that nature. We can talk about it.
He's gonna show that he's doing something for the students.
For the students, I love that idea more so than, you know, urinal or whatever.
Well, no, but that's, that's a new thing that Kirsten can put in her.
I was just saying what I want.
Thing, her list of things to auction off in the future, her names are out to raise money. You don't want your name on this urinal, you know? Comes with a ten-year warranty.
Where's she at, calling me, I'm in, I want one.
What I'm hearing from the board is, okay, let's think of some other options. So we will, I have some great people around me and we will talk about this and bring the board back some ideas for further discussion. And hopefully you'll center around one or two of them.
Yeah.
And then we can actually make a decision and move forward. I do think if you wanna do the plaque, we gotta get that done and I definitely think we should do the plaque.
We, we, we all agree.
But I'll have on the board agenda next month, Katie, to, that the, we'll work together on a resolution that Jeff could help us write about designating him as a, Dennis as an honorary trustee on the new dedication plaque.
Honorary or?
I mean, whatever the proper.
Well, probably emeritus.
Jeff, I think emeritus is the right word. But Jeff will tell us. Because somebody will, you know, challenge it, God knows.
I know.
The academic senate will know the right word.
You'll take what? Two investigations?
A two-week investigation.
No, they, they, I think Washington has burned us out on investigations, so. Yeah, okay, great.
Okay, we got it.
So that, so, so that, that was good, healthy. We have a first read board policy twenty seven thirty-one survivor, intermediate health and welfare benefits. And then the eighteen point six is first read board policy seventy-three eighty-one survivor, intermediate health and welfare benefits for employees. Nineteen, you call it disgerment, should be a German, I think. Is the intention of Victor Valley Community College District to comply with the American with Disabilities Act in all respects? Is that what it says? Says disgerment.
Cut off because it's zoomed in.
They got cut off because I think you're.
So, so. So to be truthful, they make mine bigger because my eyes are worn out and I'm old. Yeah, oh, there's the A. Wow, so, okay, cool. Way to go, Katie, good job. Okay, okay, yeah, okay. So I gotta read it as, I gotta read it in case somebody publicly comes back and says, well, you, you modified it. It says disgerment, thought it was like a dessert or something. Is the intention of Victor Valley Community College District to comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act in all respects? Any person with a disability may request that the agenda be made available in the appropriate alternative format. A request for a disability-related modification or accommodation may be made by a person with a disability who requires a modification or accommodation in order to participate in the public meeting. To Monica Martinez, Victor Valley Community College at one eight four two two Bear Valley Road, Victorville, California nine two three nine five dash five eight four nine. Seven six zero two four five four two seven one, extension two four five five. From eight thirty AM to five o'clock PM, Monday through Friday, at least forty-eight hours prior to the meeting to make reasonable arrangements under Government Code Section five four nine five four point two. Do I have a motion for engerment?
Motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
We're out of here.